This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, August 17th, meeting of the Monmouth City Council, and we will start with the roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Belts.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor McKeel.
Here.
Counselor Oberst. Counselor Selena Soliveros.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
I am present, and for the flag salute, Counselor Carey, can you lead us in that this evening?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we will have our meeting, which consists of the, our business agenda, and then we have, we'll adjourn to a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Public comments will be entertained at each meeting. Public comments are limited to three minutes in this forum, and they can either be submitted in advance, or if we have folks in person or on our go-to meeting, we will call for those in a few moments. In the meantime, we do have a consent calendar of our regular business that consists of the minutes of the meeting of August 3rd. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move approval.
Thank you, Counselor Carey.
Second.
And thank you, Counselor Oberst. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Thank you very much, and thank you, Phyllis, for the minutes. At this time, then, I, we don't have anyone in the room for public comment, and so, Phyllis, did we receive any in advance? Or has anyone identified themselves to make public comment at this time?
Neither.
Thank you very much. We will start off our business agenda this evening with a report from our senior advisory board, and with us on the call, Barbara Cronin, our director, and with us in the room, Pat Olson, who is our senior advisory board president. And Pat, if you want to come on up to the microphone, and we will turn it over to Barbara and Pat here in a moment.
For those who don't know me, my name is Pat Olson, and I am president of the Senior Community Center Advisory Board. I bring your greetings from the Senior Community Center and the advisory board. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. Tonight, we're going to talk about this past year at the center, which will probably be no real surprise. While the past year, past year has been one of the darker ones in our history, there still has been some things happening that are on a brighter note. There have been some things that have not been so good, and some things that have been good. About the time we shut down 15 months ago, on March 13th of 2020, we had several members of the board who had to resign for a variety of circumstances that were beyond their control. This has led to not having a quorum for most of the year. And I might say, by the way, that we still have three vacancies to bring us up to a complete and fully seated board. However, we were still able to meet quarterly as a board and learn of progress in other areas that were under the director's control and were projects that were approved prior to shutting down. This gave the board encouragement during a time of discouragement. For instance, progress on the deck and updates on the original bathrooms to comply with the American with Disabilities Act, otherwise known as ADA. However, in looking to the future, the recent lifting of the restrictions, the board recently met, and we are looking at a reorganization of our committee structure and possible reassignment of some of our committee chairs to a longstanding committee that we have had called a multicultural committee, which we formed just after the new addition was completed, along with the help of several organizations, including Western Oregon University. Its emphasis is on inclusion and diversity for the center. This goes along with our mission statement, which you should have in front of you there, and is up on, for those who are on Zoom, is posted in front there. And this was, which the board adopted in June of 2017. Our council liaison, Cease Coontz, also informed us that the city is also working on the same goal of inclusion and diversity as well. Knowing this, this gives us an additional resource to accomplish a five-year goal that we set five years ago on inclusion and diversity that the, that the board has set, or not five years ago, I'm sorry, set two years ago. So we're three years into, two, two years into working on this. The Senior Community Center is slowly coming back to life, and we look forward to continuing in a healthy direction in spite of any bumps in the road that may be ahead. We are a resilient population, and we have an excellent reputation as we draw membership from five different counties around us here. We have earned that excellent reputation because we have a lot going for us in what we have to offer that other centers do not. And that's because of the support that we have from the city here, as well as the university. We look forward to a bright future in spite of what's been happening. Do you have any questions?
Let's see. Any questions?
It's hard for me to hear, so I may have to have someone repeat the questions.
Will do if they, if anyone has one. Counselor Carey.
Well, I have a comment, and Pat and I, I think those of us that have been around a while would, would recognize that one of the reasons that we have a good reputation is in large part because of your leadership and your commitment to this. And, you know, we, I, I think all would join me in expressing our appreciation for that. So, so thank you. Then, more specifically, enough about you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a good reputation if it wasn't for the team I have behind me on the board.
I, I'm sure, and I know that you've done some team development on that. Congratulations on sort of reconstituting your multicultural committee. That is, that is one of the overarching
Values.
Values that our council has come up with, and I'm glad that you're embracing that. And, you know, if we could, I know you do it, and the mayor would as well, but if, if you have any, identify any active members that might be good candidates, that city council people could help recruit to your board, you know, we'd be happy to lend the voice because we, we very much appreciate and value the, the input that you all provide to us.
Well, thank you, and.
If we could help with that, I guess.
Yes, and Cease indicated that at our last board meeting, so believe me, as board members, we file that away in our, our brain already. So, thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just glad to see that you all battled through.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm glad to see that you all have battled through the, the whole pandemic situation and, and, you know, still on the up and up and continuing forward, and I'm, I'm sure that once we get through this latest interesting period, that you all are ready to go with programs and so on, so.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we've, we've had a tough road a whole. We had about four members of the board. We were down to that, and we've kind of been battling our way back without a quorum even, and so we're, we're getting there. If you know of anybody that wants to be on the senior advisory board, you know, 55 and older, we'll take them.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Phyllis, you can stop your screen share, and we will move on. Really appreciate hearing from you, and again, thanks to the rest of your board.
Thank you.
Oh, do you want to say your board members' names, or Barb, do you want to share that?
Sure. Pat Olson is our board president. We just had elections at our last board meeting to re-up officers, so Pat will be serving as president for another year, which we're all very happy about. Melissa Cannon was elected to be our vice president, so she will be a really great right-hand person to Pat. And we have not voted yet on our secretary position because we had several members that were gone from the last board meeting, but we also have Eleanor Maroney, Keith Tierney, Anne Cape, and Jean Dean that are part of our board. And then, again, we have three vacancies. So we're, we're always putting bugs in people's ears and hoping, hoping for some people that are willing to share their input on just issues that impact older adults in the community at large. You don't have to be an older adult to be part of the senior advisory board. I think there's some people that think that, but we have folks of all ages on the board now, so we're trying to create not just a diverse senior center, but a diverse board as well. So, hopefully, hoping to get more input from the community.
Right.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat.
Appreciate the opportunity.
And we will turn our next item of business over to Janet Chenard, our finance director, and catch us up on sort of the year-end of 2020, 2021 fiscally.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. Yes, some good news in spite of maybe some of the not-so-great news going on all around us. The city is, is, was looking very, very good as of June 30th of this year. I am happy to report that, in fact, if you look at the first page of your report, you will see only one yellow square. I am feeling much more positive about a number of areas where we had some concerns and have had some concerns for many years. And I guess in, in, in particular, you'll notice that both the tourism fund and the street fund, which I have traditionally kept a watch on, doesn't mean I'm not still watching, but, but I think overall, what we're seeing is that for tourism, our hotel taxes came in higher than in fiscal 1920, which is, you know, to be expected, but we anticipated that with COVID, I mean, it was to be expected that we might do a little better since COVID was abating, but I had not anticipated doing as well as we did. In fact, we were limited by our appropriations for our transfer to the general fund based on my, my 30% estimate of what we would get for lodging taxes. So, please, look forward to seeing a supplemental budget coming through, our transfer actually, to, to increase those appropriations for this fiscal year, because I'd like to be able to move the 30% that is needed over to the general fund. And, and literally, it was half. We were only able to transfer about half of what we could have transferred. So, so that's wonderful news. The street fund, thanks to council's action to create a stormwater fund in part, but also thanks to some, the good work of the government, the federal government, has passed through some more funding, which you've heard about in your Friday notes. We got $148,000-ish dollars that represents our lost revenue on highway taxes, which of course, that was impacted heavily for, for revenue loss. And we have also recently learned, although I know Director Cooper was well aware that we had our, our S, I'm going to forget the acronym, but our, the funds that ODOT provides that used to be called STP funds and are now STBG funds, I think, but they're funds that are available to us. In the past, they were limited to special projects, and we are using a large, well, we hope to be using, we've just requested a large portion of them for our overlay project that the public works is beginning work on, but we have substantially more funds available from that as well, should they be needed. And we can call on them anytime for anything that it can be paid for with gas tax. So that includes personnel costs, et cetera. Of course, because it is a lovesome amount of money and doesn't, won't replenish itself as fast as theoretically highway taxes do, that we do want to be careful with how we expend those funds. But it is good news all around for, for the transportation projects that are coming down the pipeline, which are many. So, I, I think those are the two things that I wanted to highlight in particular, moving, as I said, from yellow to green, but I will say overall, the general fund actually ended a bit higher than I was projecting for on sale. I had to come up with very early heavy caveat, heavy caveated numbers in order to put the official statement out to investors. So, of course, I heavily caveated them, and so far, of course, not all the entries are in, but it looks like our general fund will be in relatively good shape as far as our reserve levels again this year. So, so, good work by council with your fiscal prudence through the budget process, and I think I will leave it at that and take any questions if you had a chance to read and had other questions about the state of, of the finances at year-end.
Thank you so much, Janet, and I'm guessing we will have a few questions or observations. Looking at Mr. Carey's highlighter here.
I am quite happy with this report, and that is my comment.
Yes, we see nods. Counselor McKeel.
Yes, this is a wonderful report, and I, I just have to say, Ms. Chenard, I love how you, like, break it down in a different way so we can look at it. So, thank you so much for your professionalism with that. I, I was actually really pleased, I think, that we have a little more income from property taxes than we thought we would. And before, it's like, there's extra money in the checking account, like, let's go out and have a party. No, I'm just, just kidding. I was wondering if that, we could be looking at then possibly next year's, not next year's budget, but the '22 budget, is if, because we were talking about with our shared values to have a translator, and, you know, can we be looking at including that? Also, the, the Community Resource Center, that we're hoping that maybe ARPA funds could start, but we'd have to still do some staffing. Is that, is that a priority that we could be hopefully tacking a little money in there for that?
So I will say council can, can advise us on that, and Marty may have some words to say. But, so we do have some funds already allocated for, for those purposes, and our, and our hope would be to do that. And we, I should also mention that we've just learned, of course, that there's going to be another 500 billion in infrastructure project funding. So that will free up potentially some of our ARPA funds to do other things with. And so, yes, we really need to be looking at, as those monies come in, how we're going to allocate them. And I, I think that department heads will continue to work on the recommendations that we have and bring them to you, but of course, you can and should be thinking about your priorities, and especially for one-time monies like that, if there are things we can do on a one-time basis to, to set us up for the future, that would be excellent. Obviously, personnel questions are always a challenge, but just as far as ongoing funding.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you brought up the infrastructure bill. I attended President Biden's information session, and it looks like that the infrastructure bill will pay for water systems and for sewer work. So I was really excited about that because I think that, I know that the sewer was in the ARPA funds, but I know that the well is in a budget, so that, yes, I, I like that you're nodding because that's good, like, I understood that correctly. So, and bringing up.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to remember what Janet's reporting on is last year's finances. So when you say taxes came in higher last year, how can we spend that? We've already budgeted this year, and so we're, now we have to kind of forget all that. That helped make our carry-in to this year a little higher, but if we didn't plan on it coming in that high, we have to go through the budget adjustment process and all that. So, there's, there's a.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I didn't mean this coming year. It's like looking down the road another year. So, yep, sorry for being confusing.
Okay. Counselor Carey?
I just have a couple of inquiries, and I join everyone else in, in the, the message that this gives us, and the way that you've laid it out, Janet, it's, it's, it's very, it, it's good. However, one of the things that I was a little unclear on is, where are we accounting for some of the CARES Act dollars, American Rescue Act, or PLAN, or whatever that is? You know, I'm not seeing big jumps in, in our revenues, and I know most, most of that, a lot of that is a pass-through, but I'm just wondering where that's being accounted.
Right. So, so the general fund, it got a, a certain amount of the CRF funding that came in in fiscal 1920 and 2021. So it's kind of spread. You'll see it in your miscellaneous revenue line. We appropriated it, you may recall, in order to spend it. So it's hard to see it being higher than budget because we, we did a supplementary budget, and it, the budget numbers reflect that. So, so if you were to go back two years ago and look at that miscellaneous line in the general fund, you would see that it was a lot lower than the 200-ish thousand that you're seeing in each, 200,000 in fiscal '20, and, you know, 160-ish thousand in fiscal '21. And that's just the CARES Act money. And we got a roughly 400 and some odd thousand in CARES Act money, so that accounts for a large portion of it, and some of it went into the Economic Development Fund. So if you look there, you'll see a piece of it in there, and each of the funds benefited from it to some extent because of personnel costs related to COVID absences and so forth. So, so it's a little bit spread out, that 400,000, but the ARPA money, of course, has not come in yet. Any day, they keep saying, we'll get our first 50% trough of, you know, 1.7 million, but we have not seen it yet, or 1.7, 1.17 million. And so, that, when that comes in, we will also, we have appropriated some of that funding in anticipation, as Counselor McKeel was talking about, in anticipation of spending it on the water projects, and also on some cybersecurity, you may recall from the budget process. But we will have to do some additional appropriations, and that is all going to come into the grant fund. So when we do our, our next quarterly report for the first quarter of fiscal '22, that you will see the, the grant money for ARPA reflected there in the budget revenues in the grant fund. So that's looking ahead a little bit for that one. And, you know, similarly, like the 148,000 that we just got for the street fund, that wasn't prior to June 30th. So, you're right. Mayor Coontz pointed out that we're kind of mixing years up, but it's, it's, the money is flowing in fast and in many directions, and, and we have some very good things to spend it on, fortunately, that will help the community and also help us underpin our infrastructure and, and what we're doing as far as good work in the community for, you know, for city government, so.
Thank you. Just a couple more. One on the, I noticed that the expenditures in the police department was, was up. One of the only ones where expenditures really were, were above. I don't recall, you know, I was, I guess I was thinking that it might have been some salary savings with the chief retiring and that, but I've forgotten what activities would have driven that expenditure line higher.
So are you looking at the fact that it was 98% expended? You mean, so they still were under budget, which is, you know, what we strive to do, obviously, because we can't go over budget. But we build in, if you recall, that 2.769 million, we built in $30,000 in vacancy savings into that number so that we don't overbudget. So we would have had more savings shown if we didn't build that vacancy savings into the budget already. And so some of that was related to that. The other thing that I will say that offset that is that, starting in January, we had to start paying purse costs for all of our retiree work backs, which included former chief talent, and that was, you know, and he was a tier, tier-two employee, so his, his purse costs were significant, that we did not budget because we did not know that Senate Bill 1049 would have that impact. And we also had another officer who was working back from, from purse, and we had basically three employees for police that were working back. So we had those purse costs, and then the police chief cash out at the end when he departs, obviously, was not budgeted for. So, there was, there was a number of unexpected personnel costs, but still, we, I, I feel really good about the fact that they came in at 98% of budget. They were still, you know, 50,000 left on the table, which is, which is commendable because they do try to budget very tightly and very frugally. It's a little less than they've had left over in prior years, is true, but it is still, you know, they did a nice job of, with, where they did see savings, they were able to do some one-time expenditures, which they reported to you on as far as their fingerprinting machine and, and a number of other large, higher-cost items that needed replacing for many years, and so, that they had talked about, and they just got them done since they did have some savings. So hopefully, that helps.
It, it does, and I apologize for not getting you that in advance, and, and your response is commendable as usual. So, yeah, very good. That really is all that I had. A couple of minor details, but nothing that, that hasn't sort of already been broached. So thank you.
Hey, Counselor McKeel?
And I, I will wait for another counselor because I've already talked, but if nobody is jumping in there, I'll jump in. I'll jump in. So, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, there was another part of my sentence that I failed to say earlier when I listened to President Biden's infrastructure and equating that with ARPA. I was hoping then, we might, well, I'm just going to jump in here with a thought. I'm hoping then that we can reevaluate what we're looking at with. I'm hoping then that we can reevaluate what we're looking at with ARPA and hopefully more directly align ARPA funds to assisting with people who are having trouble in the community. So there's there's, we've been talking with other city councilors who are involved with the Homeless Alliance about the need for warming centers and cooling centers and equipment that needs to go into those centers. Matt Smucker has provided a list of equipment, like fans and other cooling things that we could provide to families who are in distress. So I I think that would be really closely aligned to the the ARPA, what we're hoping to do with ARPA. So I'm hoping that we would take that on. The the other thing is, in this budget on page 23, about, oh, yes, the sidewalks, it looked like there was $24,000 that was spent on that, if I remember correctly, and and I probably don't. But is that the full amount that was budgeted for that? So I never mind. My question is, did, do we now have some data about how many families applied for the 50 50 on sidewalks? Or is that this this year?
Counsel McKeel. The 24,000 first, and then maybe that's the library sidewalks is the 24,000. That's all that's all fixing the library sidewalks, and that was from urban renewal funds. But but Russ or Marty might be able to answer about the where we are with the 50 50 data.
Oh, sorry, thank you for the correction.
Well, and I can start, and I see Mr. Cooper is on the line. The the 50 50 sidewalk program was just implemented in July. So I my I suspect there isn't a lot of data, but if we have some, it would be about a month's worth. And so if it would work, if we don't have an immediate answer for you tonight, we can get that for the council so that you're going on with the program.
My apologies, I misread the budget. It's like, oh, good, we've got data because there is this sidewalk thing, and it's not, I didn't realize it was the library. So no, no, no hassle with that, Ms. Wine and Mr. Cooper. So don't worry, that's okay. Thank you.
Yep, I think we asked for a report in December to catch us up on how applications were coming in. So we'll give him till then. But, yep, that was an actual expenditure last year, and we didn't have the 50 50 program going last year.
I apologize for my lack of theory.
She was reading, though. That's very good, reading the colorful graph. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you so much, Janet, appreciate that. And we will keep you on here because our next item of business is regarding a supplemental budget. As you mentioned, those things come up from time to time when we have additional funding that we didn't plan on for or weren't budgeted. And in this case, this is regarding our city hall. So because of the amount, I believe we will have a public hearing on this. We'll have a staff report, be able to ask questions, and then I'll open a public hearing. So go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. So, yes, so we did know as of May 18th that we were going to be able to issue bonds. But the timing of them was such that it had to wait till this year so that we knew a little bit more about what the project timeline would be and also work with our financial advisors to actually issue the bonds. And so we still got it done in pretty quick time, I will say, since we priced just last week. And 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 we it was kind of a chicken and egg thing. We actually are supposed to, as I think I've shared with you before, we were supposed to send our notice to the county to do our levy and our appropriations by July 15th. But of course, we didn't know what we were going to price the bonds at until after that. And so I got an extension from the county in order to know what the levy amount would be based on the final debt service numbers of the bond. And so we did that pricing, as I mentioned last week. And so notice was cut quite short, but we did notice on the website and at the kiosk. And as I understand it from the state, that is going to be adequate as far as this particular type because it is related to debt service, which, as you know, there's there's some exceptions for debt service under the state law. So there's a couple of different things that the supplemental budget will seek to do. It will have an approval of an increased levy amount. And so what I've included is the increase in the amount of the property tax levy of 106,700, which is sufficient to do, after factoring in collections and discounts, sufficient to pay the debt service that is contemplated for this fiscal year. And but will be coming in and starting in November, of course. And then that will create that when added to, or pardon me, that was that was what we had already. No, I just gave you, sorry, I'm looking at my notes here. And so that added to what we already levied as part of our appropriations resolution back in June will bring us to a total levy amount of 368,100. And so that's the levy amount that I'm looking for after the public hearing for the council to resolve is an appropriate levy amount. And then part of this supplemental budget is also needed to be used to rename the fund. We only had, to this point in time, the one general obligation bond in. And I would like to, I will not commingle those amounts because they have to be kept separate, but I can use one fund and still track them with activity codes. And that way, I don't, the auditors don't like us proliferating funds. And best practice is under generally accepted accounting principles is not to proliferate funds. So I'm going to have one general obligation bond debt service fund that I would like to rename that accordingly. And so I'm hoping again for approval of that. And then lastly, we do need to appropriate for debt service and issuance costs. The proceeds themselves have been actually appropriated for, in the general fund, to go towards the building of City Hall. We did that part, but we didn't, of course, know what the debt service amount was going to be or what the issuance costs were. So that is what you're seeing, creating a materials and service line item for the issuance costs. I did buffer it a little bit because the the issuance costs are are just over 98,000. But I sometimes there's last minute costs that come into play. And so I just wanted to make sure that I had enough to cover that. I will only spend what I'm charged, and it will be less than 100,000. And then for debt service, for debt service, similarly, it's 99,867. I could appropriate exactly that, but with your indulgence, I'm going to appropriate 100,000, just again, to have some scotch room in case. We have not closed the deal, it closes next Tuesday. And I I feel very confident that it's going to be 99,867, but I'm going to be around number. So those are the three things that I we need to hold a public hearing for and ensure that if there are comments from the community, that they are given an opportunity to voice them. And then council can resolve as they see fit.
All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing on supplemental budget budget action regarding our general obligation bond fund. And we did receive the staff report. Do we have any council questions?
I don't want to resolve what I have.
I would just say I'm so pleased with how this has gone with S and P's rating of the city's achieved that and so on. Really says something about how Janet has maintained the books and, you know, we've had a string of city managers who have insisted on planning to make less than we actually do and planning on spending more than we actually do. And we wind up, yeah, plan to spend more than we wind up spending, and we wind up in a good place every year as a result. And so good stuff on this bond. And I think the, you know, residents of the city should be pleased with how this is shaking out. It's really quite a good result.
All right, in specifically about the budget adjustments, any questions? We have no one in the room to make public comment on this. And I will ask again, Phyllis, is there anyone who has submitted public comment or testimony regarding the supplemental budget?
We have received no comments or testimony.
All right.
Do we close the public meeting or?
From this point, I will close the public hearing. And then we have an opportunity to vote on a resolution, which is number 1931, that would authorize the supplemental budget and direct Janet to make the entries accordingly. And I will entertain the motion.
I would move the reapproved resolution, 1931, authorizing a supplemental budget for the 2021 general obligation bond levy amount and related additional 20 fiscal year 21 22 appropriations.
Second, I'll second.
All right, I had Counsel Oberst with the motion and Counsel McKeel with the second. Any questions on what we're voting on here? Phyllis, could you please do the roll call? With your microphone on, my dear, thank you.
Okay. Counsel McKeel.
Here, yes, sorry, yes.
Was that me?
Oh, hi, I didn't hear you.
Counsel Lopez.
Hi.
Counsel Carrie.
Hi.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Hi.
Counselor Oberst.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, Janet. Take a breath, take a breather, get that thing into the county. And I'm sure we'll get other get other work to do. So at this time then, we will turn it over to Suzanne Duffer, Community and Economic Development Director, for another familiar item, second reading and adoption of the ordinance Vacating Alberta Street.
Hey, well, good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This is, as the mayor mentioned, second reading of ordinance 1401. It's an ordinance to adopt a street vacation for a portion that's not developed on Alberta Street, located between Sacred Lane and Powell Street East. You've held a public hearing on this on July 6th and voted to approve that. So this is the ordinance that would make it official and officially adopt that. First reading was held on August 3rd, and we came back with the ordinance and the legal description and a map showing the area to be vacated that's attached to your staff report. And so tonight will be your second and final reading, if that's approved. And that will make it adopted and effective. And go ahead and get it recorded with the county as well to finalize and update the maps. So happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Counsel Carrie.
Just just one, Suzanne. In the staff report under background, in the second paragraph, that middle sentence says, "The city did not receive any objection to the vacation by a majority of owners in the affected area." I didn't quite understand what that meant. I know what it says, but we did have one objection, but it was certainly not by a majority. Is is that a important deal that no objections by a majority? Is that what we go by?
Yeah, so when we receive these street vacations that are initiated by a private property owner, then they need to submit a petition with the consent of two thirds of the folks that live within the affected area. And so just noting there that that we do meet that criteria. And it was a little uncertain if that was official objection from from a from a property owner in that area. But duly noted, it certainly wasn't the majority that we're opposing. Yeah, thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel McKeel.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to approve ordinance number 1401, an ordinance vacating a certain portion of the public right of way identified as Alberta Avenue, located between Sacred Lane North and Powell Street East. And I probably said the name of the street wrong.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel McKeel, for the motion about Sacred Lane and Powell Street vacation. And thank you, Counsel Lopez, for the second. So this would be ordinance number 1401, and I will have Phyllis read the roll call, please.
With my microphone on, Counsel Salinas Oliveros.
Hi.
Counsel McKeel.
Yes.
Counsel Oberst.
Yes.
Counsel Carrie.
Hi.
Counsel Belts.
Hi.
Counsel Lopez.
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, ordinance 1401.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, if I may, before Ms. Duffner signs off, I just have to say what a beautiful plant she's done in her office. I just, if, yeah, sorry, you have a great rubber tree plant, sorry, a little human moment.
Yeah, I was looking, sorry, what we were talking about, yes, it loves that spot.
Thank you for the greenery in our meeting.
All right, yes, it's very happy there in that little spot, but I'm sure it will love its new spot in a new city hall even more. All right, at this time then, for our last business agenda item, turn over to Marty Wine, talking about this policy that we're kind of polishing up a little bit and trying to be able to be consistent about the use of banners on our light poles. So Marty.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm not bringing a decision to you that I'm asking for for you to make. I wanted you to be aware of some changes that we're going to be making to our our policy related to banners that are displayed across the street in Monmouth and then also the banners that can go on our our light poles on Main Street. And mostly, I'm providing this for your information because it constitutes a little bit of a change. As you said, Madam Mayor, we're we're polishing up what we're doing, and I just wanted you to know about it. It also constitutes a new investment potentially of city funds. And so I wanted to get your feedback or your input about these changes, if you have any. So I'll start with the cross street banner and just say a little bit about what we have been doing. We discovered, because we had some requests this year for cross street banners, we discovered that the Oregon Department of Transportation has, they have rules and they have standards and a permit process that we need to go through to approve those banners. And so what we've done is tried to align the language that we have in our sign code that's got some some guidance about cross street banners with the ODOT standard and the permit process. And so we wanted to provide you with the requirements that ODOT gives us that we need to meet. And so we are going to be changing our practice so that we are aligning with what ODOT asks for and asking for the ODOT permit as well. So we provided you an updated application just so you can see what we're going to be, what we're going to be asking for those who request cross street banners. I don't have a lot more on cross street banners to mention. The the light pole banners are a slightly different matter. They're not along a state highway and therefore not subject to the ODOT banner policy. And this year, we had a request to add, to do something other than we've done in the past. And that is to display, display something on the light pole banners that we, but is something different than the decorations that the city already owns and displays. What we realized when that request came in was we don't really have a way to do that and that we we probably should put some kind of structure or. and that we we probably should put some kind of structure or application process in place in order to accommodate those requests when they come in. And so begging the help of a whole bunch of folks who are here from staff, we we've talked together about a way to try to accommodate those community requests. And the proposal is to do that with an application and a sponsorship approach, which would be that if if there are folks who would like to have something displayed that is similar to the ODOT banner policy, that's got, it's either an official observance or a holiday or an event that's in the community that's meant to notify that that the community, community members could come forward and offer to help sponsor or underwrite the banners. And there's a similar program that the city of Dallas nearby has put in place where with enough critical mass of requests for light pole banners come in, a community member can sponsor for a hundred dollars their name or their service member's name in the case of this Hometown Heroes program. And they could, they could represent the sponsorship, but that the city would be the one providing the banners and the design. And that would be to avoid questions about creating an open forum for any content. So we're bringing you this proposal and this policy, just to let you know that it's, we're trying to to put a process in place that can accommodate these requests. And I I found a very important omission in my staff report under financial implications. I just wanted you to know that despite what the first bullet says, the city does not have currently have any funding to provide the banners. And that's why, but I just wanted to call that out. And that was why we went into some detail, just to talk about that. This could represent a financial commitment in the future, depending on the number of requests that come in. But the idea of the sponsorships is meant to help underwrite at least the provision of the banners. So let's see, I'm not sure I have anything else necessarily to report. I just wanted to highlight this to you because it represents a potential change in our current practice, and it means that we might be investing in light pole banners where we hadn't prior. And I would welcome any comments or feedback that you have about this proposal. And and we're going to be doing a trial run with the light pole banner approach with investing in Hispanic Heritage Month banners for some segment of Main Street.
Thank you. Yeah, this isn't a policy decision, so this really is administrative. And we really appreciate you bringing this to us. I know you've gotten some comments and input on it and not really a decision for us, but certainly something we want to know because we want to be able to promote this and and support it. So this is great. Counselor Oberst.
So one point, we had a display on the corner of Warren and Main when it was an empty lot that consisted of a bunch of banners that were created by local citizens. Now, look at downtown Independence where they have hand-painted banners celebrating aspects of their community, be it bikes or the river or hops or whatever. And when I look at ours, we have, I think, mostly factory-generated generic banners for the seasons, et cetera. And I wonder if there isn't room, perhaps for the Arts Commission to sponsor a project of bringing us some hand-painted banners that we could put up on Main Street? And if we would have room for a thing like that? And what has become, by the way, of the banners from across the street? Do we still have them?
You know, I I actually didn't reference that in my staff report either, but I was informed that historically, we have had hand-painted, that there was at the at the outset through Monmouth Business Association, an effort to create those banners, and they do still exist, and I believe we're storing them. And the answer is that, yes, I think that the idea of the city, the idea of the city being the designer was an effort to not create an open forum, but I I don't think that that precludes the design, including something that that the community or the Arts Commission would would want to to sponsor or commission.
I think some of the ones that used to be on Main Street on the corner lot actually are still displayed in the rack that is on Monmouth Avenue. That was part of a Ford family project.
Really good, thank you, I'd forgotten that.
So I know that there are some there, I'm not sure if they're rotated out, but.
And I'm also informed that during the holidays, we are still displaying the hand-painted banners, art that was that was created.
Counselor McKeel.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Wine, this is really an excellent, lots of work. So thank you so much for, I know that this has been a labor of, maybe I wouldn't use the word love, but a labor of something. So Counselor Oberst, I like your idea of the hand-painted banners, which, you know, from the Art Commission. I would, I would think this is also a great opportunity for us to focus these light pole banners. I like the idea that we have Hispanic Heritage Month that we're working on here. We have shared values about how we're trying to make our city more inclusive and welcoming. I did a little bit of research on commemorative months and found out that the National Archives actually has a list of commemorative months. And with that list is the legislative authority that comes with that, why we have that as a commemorative month. So, for example, Black History Month is in February, Women's History Month. If we were ahead of the game, November is Native American Month. So I I think it'd be wonderful to see hand-painted, streetlight pole banners that, sorry, flags, whatever, sorry, that are that are associated with members of our community that that we are trying to reach out to and make feel very much part of our community. So, yeah, this is, this is really exciting. I just can't thank you enough for this.
Yep. And again, some great partners to be had. Certainly, we can connect with the university and some of those affinity groups, and they are creating a new welcome center on campus that is targeted towards being a space of, or Freedom Center, I'm sorry it's called, which is really a welcoming space for students of color. And I bet we'll be able to really work with them closely on events and activities honoring different members of our campus and our community. So yet they can do some fundraising and we can get a great set of banners. So, thank you. All right, Counselor Carey.
Just a couple, yeah, I've got a couple. One, as I looked at this, there might be some value in in sort of identifying, well, I got a bunch of things, and I'll try to capitalize them. Establish dates, maybe, and priority dates, you know, like, like as we have done in the past, you know, the September for the university welcome back. Maybe that that needs to be reserved in some way, or maybe not. Maybe it's it's gone, but I mean, otherwise, you may get into a first-come, first-served thing. And and then you'd run the risk of being said, well, you're prioritizing these people over those people, and we've always been here, and blah, 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 you know. So so there may be some value to that. And I didn't quite, I was a little unclear, because it's, yeah, I've read a couple. It seemed like I'm getting in from, I mean, I'm, I've just got too much going on in my mind. But, you know, the one hundred dollars per banner for sponsorship, I mean, that works well if you've got thirty-four. You might be able to get thirty-four banners for thirty-four hundred dollars. You're not going to get five for ten dollars or a hundred dollars. So there's an order of magnitude there that we just want to be, and and that's going to vary with complexity. So anyway, we may want to give a little thought to that. I didn't see a, I didn't see a part of the of the sequencing there where the sponsoring group would have approval of what the city has come up with. If they don't like it, they'll come back and say, give us a new design next year, and we'll say this has worked for one year. And 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 I'm not necessarily nuts about those sorts of special interests. I'm not so sure they shouldn't pay a pretty good chunk of that, but but that's that's another decision. And and if they do have that approval, then you got a better chance for renewing the same one, and we get a value on that, it seems. In the application process, it seems that that we might want to know a little bit about the organization and what the purpose that they're doing these banners for. You could get ten people together and they want to have whatever they'd like to promote. I mean, who are the, you know, friends of Gentle Woods Park and what's their agenda? I don't know. It just seemed like we, you know, we'd want to know who those groups were. There might be some criteria for some of these, or maybe a, you know, a matter of public interest, a community celebration. We may want to, or may not, limit political parties, political issues or initiatives. We would be, if it stands as is, we would be funding those, in effect, and that, and certainly no commercial interests.
No, so that's in there when it limits what they can be, which is the can be legal holidays, federally, state, or locally recognized observances or local civic events. It's limited.
That's the street ban.
It's actually both.
Oh.
So paragraph one in the staff report is the cross-street banners, which is ODOT language.
So we're defining, right, we're defining the policy for the light pole banners similarly to the ODOT
Sure, sure.
category of what can be displayed. For the same reasons that you've just identified.
Yeah.
We would be limiting, we'd be limiting to just the local commemorations and civic events.
I didn't read it the same way, and it's, and I'm pleading ignorant on this, the same way for the light pole banners. I didn't quite read that.
Second bullet on under purpose, John.
The same way.
It's slightly different wording, but.
And one thing that occurs to me, you know, John pointed out that traditionally, we had put up September, October, welcome back for the students. And you have identified September, October for for Western, September, October for Hispanic Heritage Month are both on the application. And I and I'm assuming that you have thought about splitting up our thirty-four locations and, you know, either alternating up and down the street, or, you know, one, one end, one end, however you want to do it.
Yes.
I think we can accommodate two or even three things at a time if we had to.
Possible, yes.
And I wondered as well about, could we add banner arms to Highway ninety-nine? Long term.
Um, I'd have to check about that.
Okay. I mean, I have seen such on major state highways in other communities. And so I would love it if we could add those to some of our polls in town.
Counselor McKeel.
Yeah, I really like Counselor Oberst's idea of like, maybe putting a calendar together so we we have a kind of a general idea of how this is working, so we're not like blindsided. I will send the link to the National Archives to Phyllis so that everybody, or Ms. Bowman, so that everybody can get, see what this looks like. But like for March National Histories Month, it has Public Law one oh three dash twenty-two that explains why this is a national commemorative month. So I think it might answer that that question.
Yeah, again, on the application itself, it says the existing ones we have. I guess the question is, are we going to limit people from having something else? No, because we have spring season is one existing display. We we can probably give that up, but are we going to give up Western? Probably not. So, yeah, there might be a little way to word that a little better.
Or or there are probably ways to share the space.
Yeah, right. Or and note that that they would be.
Right, and we put that in the policy as well.
Yeah.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
I just wanted to add, Ms. Wine, that I I don't think you'll find difficulty with sharing the space with Western Hispanic Heritage. West Western Freedom Center is one of the partners for Hispanic Heritage, and they are working towards Hispanic serving institution status. And they're very excited about what's what's happening. They really feel more, really a part of the community. So I don't believe you'll find conflict with sharing that those spaces.
Yep.
Agreed.
Yep, that's a good fit, for sure. All right.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you very much. That brings us to reports, and we'll go ahead and get through these and then take a short break before the Urban Renewal Board meets. For the mayor's report, I, I, as I left our meeting two weeks ago tonight, I got home and listened to a phone message I had received from Bob MacArthur. Bob is the son of Scott MacArthur, who was the longtime Monmouth City Attorney. He has been our historian, our curmudgeon, our big thinker, and we lost Scott on August second. We, I have let the council know, and and we don't have a, any word yet from Bob about how the community will be able to gather to celebrate the life of Scott MacArthur. But if you don't know about him, you'll learn more about him in my mayor's notes. He was a talented man, a man of many, many pursuits, including recording the history of our community in a book that's called Monmouth, Oregon, the saga of a small town. But also in looking towards the future, Scott founded the Monmouth Independence Community Foundation, which is a philanthropic organization which benefits individuals with scholarships. It benefits our classroom teachers in the Central School District and many, many nonprofits here in our community. And Scott's legacy will be with us for many, many years to come, and we will all have quite a toast to him in the coming days or weeks. But that's been on my mind a lot the last couple of weeks. And folks who would like to remember Scott with a donation, the Monmouth into Commendance Community Foundation is at HTTPSMIfoundation.net. Many of Scott's favorite causes are represented there, so. That's what I have. And Ms. Wine.
I don't have a report for you tonight. Did we skip the council? Am I?
Nope, that brings us to the boards and.
We'll just go ahead. Yes, Counselor McKeel.
But Mary Coons, I don't know protocol, but from what everybody has said, I've talked to several people. Scott was an amazing Monmouth resident, and is it out of line to have a moment of silence during our city council meeting in respect for all of his contributions? And maybe this isn't the forum, and I apologize for suggesting.
No, I I would appreciate that. So, yes, thank you. Kent Scott MacArthur. Thank you. All right, reports of boards and commissions. So what what other good volunteer workers are going on and have been taking place over the last couple of weeks? Counselor Oberst.
The Parks Board had a tour of the parks a week or week and a half ago. I was unable to be there. I haven't gotten a report from Russ on what was observed and decided. I will be sure to have that information next time around. We'll have another meeting between now and then, I believe, I checked. So, yeah, and, you know, just getting around and looking at some of our larger parks and the conditions and things that might need to be addressed.
Okay, great. Anybody else have a, Counselor Carey?
Planning Commission meets tomorrow evening. Primary topics will be a review of. Primary topics will be a review of new city hall building and the new Taco Bell, which seems to be a popular item. And the layout and design of all that will be discussed at that time. So there'll be a report later.
Perfect, thank you. And Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I have a report from the Middle Emmett Valley Homeless Alliance and the alliance meets the second, the second Thursday of each month. We are still meeting virtually from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And this past meeting was largely, you know, it was largely just getting into the weeds of how we operate, leadership elections, current leadership of the alliance was reaffirmed in their positions, this by our bylaws, happens every, every year. And, but we did have, aside from the nitty gritty, we did have a terrific and to an extent heartbreaking presentation by Tricia Frizzle, who is, who is, who is updating us on youth homelessness in our community. And I know that when we, when we picture homelessness, oftentimes we picture, you know, we picture the camps off the highway. We picture, you know, kind of a stereotype, or at least I'll admit that, you know, more often than not, you know, I think, I think as a, as a society, we, that's the vision that we give. But homelessness occurs in many different ways, you know, whether it's, whether it's someone sleeping in their car, whether it's someone that's displaced, that's sleeping, squatting in a camper in someone's yard, whether it's a, you know, high school student that's trying to, trying to find ways to, you know, navigate the paths of youth and school and, you know, couch surfing on, on their friends' couches to be able to get by. These things are real issues. And so this spotlight on youth homelessness in our community was, was really, really eye opening. As many, as many things, you know, that are intertwined with this issue, I have more questions than answers. I don't think anyone's cracked that nut, not yet. But I just encourage you to, to remember that, you know, homelessness takes many, you know, many shapes, many colors, many sizes. And it exists scenarios that we, we don't often, don't often attribute it to. So the Middle Emmett Valley Homeless Alliance does have a youth subcommittee and that has recently been, recently been instituted. And I very much look forward to being able to work with them more in the future to try to address the issues surrounding, you know, this unique population and the, the unique struggles that it deals with. So.
Great, thank you for that report. And the others? All right, council comments, any announcements or activities coming up that we need to know about? Carol McKeel.
There she is, okay. I just wanted to let people know about the Hispanic Latino Heritage Month that is being spearheaded by our own counselor, Salinas Oliveros, and I've been giving a hand with that. There'll be story times every Saturday morning, 11 to 12 during Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. So September 18th, we will have our fire chief and some other firefighters reading a story on, there's so many, I have to like look at my cheat sheet here. September 25th, both of these will be at Main Street Park Amphitheater. Our very own Mayor Coons, along with Mayor Mercado, will be reading a story and the Spanish version will be read by our city counselor, Salinas Oliveros. And we have two story times in Independence. The first on October 2nd in Henry Hill will be by the MES Vice Principal Jason Lesick. And then in Independence Riverview Park Amphitheater on October 9th, we will have our Police Chief Haynes and Police Chief Mason and the Officer Cruz or Zoco, I'm sorry, I, I did a terrible job with that, his name. And we'll be reading stories as well. So we have Independence Library doing some crafts. We have city counselors doing some crafts here in Monmouth. So we'll also have a September 29 story time at Western in Hammersville, Hammersley, Hammersley Library. And Western's president will be the storyteller along with the admissions director, Anna Hernandez Hunter. And then finally, W O, W U Freedom Center is hosting a celebration on October 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in their new Freedom Center. And Counselor Salinas Oliveros has been actually working really amazing on a project that's kind of above and beyond. So and I'll let her explain that because it's really quite amazing. Sorry, I didn't mean to steal the thunder. I'm sorry.
No, Counselor McKeel has, has more than just stepped in. She's done a lot of organizing and work and so have our partnerships. We have just some great partnerships with Western Freedom Center, with leaderships in the community, with Oregon Child Development Coalition. And the project that we are currently working on is really gathering stories from our migrant and seasonal farm worker families and really spotlighting what, what they do for our community, how important their work is, and really issues that maybe our community does not know about. And so we're hoping to have some public art displays and, and having pictures of their hands and different generations. So when I had a conversation with Odie Gampos, who's the director of OCDC, we talked about having a generational scope, those who are migrant farm workers who have stayed for generations and have a generational aspect, and then those who are here seasonal and, and they're very excited about this. And Bakun, the organization in Woodburn, has also worked with Western and there's just a lot of collaborations that are happening that I think the city can benefit from years to come with all these collaborations. So really looking forward to all of this, just a lot of fun ways and educational ways for our community to get involved and to enjoy. So thank you. All of you can participate in different ways.
And we, we could use help during the craft time because it's been a long time since I worked in a summer camp and worked with kids like that.
We appreciate any volunteers, any of those states.
Great, thank you for sharing those great details. That'll be a month of, how did you say, fun and education. And I knew you could spit out the name of the library on campus, Counselor McKeel. I'm glad you figured that out. All right, Counselor Oberst.
I would just really like to echo your comments about Scott. My first real experience when I first moved to this town of kind of how it became what it is, was attending a presentation by Scott at the library where he talked about the history of Monmouth. And, you know, you can blame Scott for me being involved in the community because I was so fascinated by his presentation. Next thing I know, I'm starting to volunteer for things and, and so on and so forth. And, and I will mention that as we circulated the petition to allow the sale of beer and wine in town, Scott was the only person to sign it twice. I accused him of excess enthusiasm, but you know, he, he was just, you know, an incredible work of nature, that man. And he will be missed. Feel very, very fortunate to have experienced him in my life and I'm, I'm sad to know that he is gone.
I'm sure Lane Shutterly has a good story or two that will be shared as attorneys in Polk County.
Yeah, Scott, Scott was one of the elders of the Polk County Bar when I started practice back in 1981. And I would say he was, Scott epitomized what I would say is zealous representation of his clients. Scott was a strong advocate, which meant that he was sometimes a little difficult to deal with in circumstances where we were representing opposing parties. But he was always professional, always ethical, and we were always friends, even in the middle of, you know, there's that, I forget which Shakespeare play, the line, do as the lawyers do, strive mightily, but eat and drink as friends. And I think my relationship with Scott epitomized, epitomized that.
Thank you, Lane. All right, I will entertain a motion to a regular meeting.
Move adjourned to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, we are adjourned and I am going to ask for a seven minute break if we can return at eight o'clock and the Urban Renewal Agency Board will be here in our places. It'll be magic. All right. See, some members of the Urban Renewal Agency Board are late to their meeting, but will be joining us any moment. Just kidding. All right. And Phyllis is with us. So I would like to call to order this Tuesday, August 17th, 2021 meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency Board and ask for the roll call, please. Phyllis Bowman.
Ms. Belts, here. Mr. Carey.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. McKeel.
Here.
Mr. Oberst.
Yeah.
Ms. Salinas Oliveros.
Here.
And Ms. Coons.
I am here, thank you. And at this time, we would entertain citizen comments regarding the business of the Urban Renewal Agency. We have no one in the room. Phyllis, have we received any citizen comments or? Don't see anyone on the call.
We have not.
All right, thank you. Our item of business is the consent calendar and we last convened this board on June 1st. So those minutes were included in your packet and I would ask for any corrections, additions, or move to make them official.
I'd move approval. I would second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Carey, for the motion and Mr. Oberst for the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And it looks like those are approved. So we will sign off on them, put them in the public record, and move on to our business agenda. This is one item we have this evening. And I will turn it over to Suzanne Duffner, our Community and Economic Development Director, to introduce the business before us.
All right, great, thanks. Guess I need to use the word chair for the Urban Renewal Board. Tonight, we have a work session scheduled to talk about considering a consideration of amending the Monmouth Urban Renewal Plan. And we've invited Elaine Howard, who is an urban renewal expert, a consultant that works in our area and state throughout the state, to help urban renewal agencies such as yourself with these types of issues. Before I turn the time over to Elaine to talk to you a little bit more about the process and steps involved and kind of the pros and cons of looking at amendments to the Urban Renewal Plan. I did want to give a little bit of a background information overview of the staff memo that's in your packets. Just kind of get us all on the same page of, you know, where we're at today. So the city of Monmouth adopted an urban renewal plan in December 2005. And it had a sunset of 20 years to be able to complete the projects and accomplish, implement the plan during that time. So our sunset is in December 2025, and believe it or not, that is coming up soon. And we have still quite a few projects that need to get accomplished in that. So, you know, purpose of those projects that are outlined in our urban renewal plan are really to help spur economic developments and revitalize our downtown and improve our tax base and create, you know, more jobs and make underutilized properties that are commercially industrially zoned more viable for development. So we've had some success in that. The S-curves Monmouth Commons are two really recent examples of how we've done that. And so in 2020, with your interim city manager, Chad Olson, we brought to you a five-year capital improvement plan with our plan for the projects that we were intending to spend that money down that's remaining so far. We've spent about four and a half million. And by the plan, it authorizes us to go up to our maximum indebtedness of 12 million. So it's kind of a slower start. A lot of times you want to see that increment, that tax increment, those funds start coming in before you just jump right out and start borrowing and spending that. So, but, but five years is a really aggressive timeline to be able to spend the rest of that down. And especially when the priorities that we've outlined in that capital improvement plans are really infrastructure projects related, which are great, right, because they'll help make the public improvements that are sometimes really costly and barriers to properties being able to develop. But there, we're running into some challenges with getting those done quickly. You know, examples of those are just the overall staff capacity to be able to manage those larger, more complex projects. And especially in a time when we're experiencing a bit of a growth cycle, as I'm sure you're aware, in the city with the new developments happening. So it's kind of an added workload to be balancing. And then just other issues with construction right now, right? It's, there's a lot of challenges with labor shortages, people to actually do the work, and volatile prices and cost and shortages of materials from COVID, from the pandemic. And then just what we're also running into are permitting issues in terms of if there are wetlands where that would be impacted by a project, there's a pretty lengthy period of time to get through a wetland permitting process. So for these reasons, we started looking at whether or not it makes sense to look at expanding the duration, extending that 20-year horizon for being able to complete the plan and the projects that are in it so that we don't unnecessarily leave money on the table from what we could borrow from this tool and not be able to accomplish all of those projects and to be able to use those funds the most strategically for the, for the benefit of Monmouth and our economic development plan. So this was actually something that came up during the Economic Development Planning Committee meeting. We, those were the folks that helped us develop our five-year strategy. And that was one of the recommendations out of the last meeting when they met was to look at trying to extend the duration of the urban renewal plan in order to be able to do a lot of these projects more effectively that we've outlined in our strategies. So we, we approached Elaine to help us better understand, kind of the first step, right, of this process of exploring an urban renewal plan extension. And there are other things that you can adjust in your plan as well as you can imagine over 20 years. Some things probably change in your community. So there may be projects that need to get adjusted or properties adjusted into there or even looking at the maximum indebted amount itself as projects become more expensive. So Elaine is here to talk to us about those process requirements. And I have a discussion kind of on some of the things you should be thinking about, the pros and cons of doing that, that type of amendment. And really, this is just a work session. We didn't expect, you know, a specific decision tonight to kind of get the process going. And with that, I will turn the time over to Elaine.
Thank you. I'm Elaine Howard. I'm a consultant who works solely on urban renewal issues and have done so for the past 16 years. So I know urban renewal A to Z. And if there is any question that you have, even outside of just what we're talking about now, that you want to go over with me, feel free to ask. If I don't know the answer, I'll know how to find out the answer. So it's nice to meet you all. First, to talk about the plan duration clause a little bit. A plan duration clause is not a requirement in an urban renewal plan. Some cities chose when they adopted their urban renewal plans to put a plan duration in. Of all of the urban renewal plans I've worked on, and I've worked on over 70 of them in the state, the only one that I know that also has a 20-year duration is Gresham. There are other plans that have had 25 years or 30 years. But the only one that I can think of that also had a 20-year is Gresham. And I am right now working with them on changing that for, for them also. So part of the reason that plans during that 20-year time period didn't get to meet their maximum indebtedness was the Great Recession that we had right after your plan was adopted. So some of that growth that was projected just didn't happen in any of the communities around the state. And that put off the economic forecasts for the amount of tax increment funds that you might be able to raise over that time period. So that's just a little background about plan duration. In your plan, you say to change that plan duration has to be a substantial amendment to your plan. A substantial amendment is described in your plan as the same amendment as the original adoption of an urban renewal plan. So it has to go, it has to have public input. It has to go to your agency for review. Your agency doesn't adopt it because your agency is the same as the city council. And by you adopting it, then it makes the rest of any public input moot. So they recommend that it goes out for the formal public review process. The, that includes a consult and confer letter with all of the taxing jurisdictions. And you have to give them a 45-day time period to respond. It includes going to your planning commission for a review of conformance to your comprehensive plan, doing a briefing in front of the counting commission, and then a city council non-emergency ordinance, which is done, it's called a super notice, but it's a notice to either your residents, postal patrons, voters, or utility customers within your community. Suzanne, will you pull up the timeline for us? That timeline typically takes about six months because of all of those required meetings. And those required meetings have to be sequential. So depending on how much public input you want to have within the decision-making process, the actual adoption period is four months long. So if you get your amendment written to go through the agency meeting, and those are in green shown on this timeline, and it shows month three through the end of a month five. So an agency meeting, that consult and confer time period, which is that blue long line, your planning commission, the county commission briefing, city council hearing, and then the city council adoption of a non-emergency ordinance, those take 30 days to go into effect. So it's not done until that 30-day time period. Anytime, any additional time to that is time that's spent on public involvement. And I think you can take that down now, Suzanne. And different cities decide differently on how much public involvement they need or want. And it's partially dependent on what kinds of changes you need or want to do through the plan. So if you're just changing the duration, the time period, you probably don't need a lot of public involvement because you're not changing projects, you're not changing the boundary. You're just saying, we need more time to spend the amount of money that we have to spend. If you are then considering other things like increasing your maximum indebtedness, so increasing that amount of money that you have to spend in the future or adding projects that would change the plan, then you probably do want some public input so that they understand what you're doing and what it means to them as taxpayers. The biggest input that we receive from people always is, and it comes with that notice for the city council meeting, is will this impact my property taxes? Does urban renewal impact my property taxes? So if you are not increasing the maximum indebtedness and all, it's very easy to tell people, this is just extending a timeframe, and they will totally get that. And you won't, you typically won't get much opposition to taking that action. If you're increasing the maximum indebtedness, even though there isn't a direct impact to property taxpayers, people get confused. And so you have to do some messaging and you have to do some information to your community so that they really understand what that means and where does that extra money come from if it's not coming from them. So that's the process of a substantial amendment. We also talked about pros and cons a little bit, and I'll walk through some of those with you and then open it up to your questions. So the pros of extending the duration of your plan obviously are to allow you to spend that extra authority that you have on doing very important projects in your community. And every community has those important projects. And the real question is, do you have funding elsewhere to pay for those projects if you don't pay for them out of urban renewal? And typically, whenever I ask a community that question, the answer is no. If we don't pay for it through urban renewal or have urban renewal to leverage these projects, they won't get done, at least not for a very, very long time. So an extension of the duration allows you to use that full initial maximum indebtedness. The city's tax rate is 28% of your full tax rate. So that means if there's a dollar out there and the city is paying, getting 28 cents out of that dollar, your urban renewal agency captures that entire dollar of taxes. So that other 72% or 72 cents on a dollar is extra money that you get to spend in your community for projects and programs that if you don't have urban renewal, you don't get that money to spend. A large portion of that money comes from the school district allocation. And the good news on that is that does not impact your school district's funding. So that money is able to stay in your community to help do projects in your community. The schools are funded on a per pupil basis. So it's dependent upon the number of students. And urban renewal will only increase those number of students in your community if people think your community is better. Urban renewal has never been alleged that it has ever decreased the per pupil attendance at schools. The other pro is if you decide to increase the maximum indebtedness, there may be additional projects in your community that you have identified that need to be undertaken, and you would have a funding source for that. The way urban renewal works is typically the first few years of an urban renewal area, there is pretty slight income because urban renewal is dependent upon that 3% property tax increase every year. So if you close this area and started a new one, which is a different option, something different that you could do, what would happen is that tax base gets reset. You're then earning your money in your urban renewal area off of that 3% increase again. So your money over time will put you backwards to a point where you're getting very little money for about five to eight years. So that's an option, but it also comes with the much lower amount of income. The, the cons of doing this action is it extends the duration, which means it also extends those impacts on the taxing jurisdictions. So they have not been getting taxes off the increase of the assessed value within the urban renewal area. If you extend the timeframe, there'll be an additional timeframe for which they won't be getting those taxes. The amount of increase doesn't increase much because they're your maximum. If you don't increase the maximum indebtedness, the maximum indebtedness number is the same, right? It's just taking you longer to get to that full amount. So when this was adopted in 2005, the taxing districts were told an amount, the amount is going to be very similar to that if you just extend the duration. But it does mean that they still will forego those property taxes off the increased value in the area. Urban renewal is set up to hopefully increase those property tax revenues so that when urban renewal does end, the taxing districts will get more money than they would have if you didn't have urban renewal. So there, there's that offset to that, but it still does mean that extension of losing that, that amount of money until urban renewal is over. If you increase the maximum indebtedness, that would be an increased impact on all of the taxing districts, including the city. So it would be, you would be required to go back to those taxing districts and let them know that increase and let them know that urban renewal would have a further impact upon them. Some key considerations in trying to decide what you're going to do are, are there additional projects that need to be done that aren't on your original project list? And is there a funding source for them outside of urban renewal? Are there projects on your existing list that aren't done for which you have no other funding source? And can the city itself continue to operate without the funds that urban renewal is putting into or taking from the city budget because of your urban renewal area? And I know for the city of Gresham, that is one of their key considerations is, does the city budget really need that funding now instead of it going to the urban renewal area? In terms of the amount of increase of maximum indebtedness, you as a city council, so outside of the agency, the council makes the final decision. The city council may increase the maximum indebtedness of up to 20% of the original maximum indebtedness as adjusted by inflation every year. And that inflation is a figure that needs to come from the original report that was adopted. So that would be 2.4 million plus, whatever that inflation amount would be. If you decided to increase your maximum indebtedness above that amount, it requires that 75 of the tax, 75% of of the taxing districts that levy permanent rate taxes would have to agree to that. That is typically the school district, the city itself, the county, and you have a fire district, right? And the fire district, those are usually the ones that will make up that seventy-five percent. Sometimes you can, if a fire district is not supportive, sometimes some of those other districts will add up to get you past that seventy-five percent amount. So that's just something to know in terms of if you decided to increase, what is the ability that you have and at what level, then do you have to go talk to other taxing districts? So that is all I had for a formal presentation. But again, I'm happy to answer any and all questions.
Great. Thank you so much Elaine and and thank you for the work you did for us last year on reviewing our plan and catching us up because it's, it had been neglected and I really appreciate your expertise on getting us to this point and this excellent explanation. So just so you know, when you you don't have to explain about the school district much, I'm the director of finance and operations at our school district.
Oh, awesome. That helps so much.
So I always explain to the school district and the council about how urban renewal funding affects or does not affect school district finances, but anyway, other questions or comments? Again, this is just a work session. This is for our education to learn. We're not gonna give any guidance or direction on this quite yet, but I I really appreciate too this perspective that we're we we started the urban renewal district at a unique time because of the near thereafter immediate crash of our economy. And here we are again in an extraordinary time for purposes of major projects and labor and supply chain issues that we're finally looking at a way to do all these projects that have been sitting there and I don't at this point know how we would get them done. John Oberst.
So just, I want to make sure that I have a full picture here. The only time we have to actually seek the approval of our fellow taxing districts would be if we go over a twenty percent increase, anything else we can consult with them, but we would be okay moving forward. Is that a fair statement or am I missing a caveat or two in there?
Yeah, go ahead Elaine.
You are totally correct on what we've talked about. The only, the other issue would be if any public building project is added to a plan, then three of the four, it's not the seventy-five percent, they couldn't be easy. It's three of the four top taxing districts have to approve the addition of a public building. So other than that, yes, the city council, the agency can direct and the city council can approve a substantial amendment on their own.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, thank you. And um, thank you very much, Ms. Howard, for for the wonderful presentation here. It reaffirmed a lot of things that, you know, I I had heard and thought I knew about about these these districts and it's wonderful to hear, to hear it straight from the professional. Given those 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 public building caveats, we just approved funding for a public building. If we were to make adjustments after this, does that put any of that funding that we've already approved in in jeopardy?
It shouldn't, if the project was already in your plan, the changes of the legislation do not impact you.
Fantastic. I thought that was the case and that's great news.
The, some of the folks who lobbied to start the urban renewal plan will tell you, one of the reasons it was started was for a city hall. It's been in the plan, shall we say. Others, John Carey.
Thank you Elaine. You've looked at our project list. And I'm wondering what what your thoughts are on that and and how how is that project list? How does that compare with some of the other organizations that you've dealt with? And in particular reference to one of the, one of the things that we would like to do with this is to in increase the tax base, the downtown and then promote an economic development and so on. Do these things, are these projects that we have particularly on our, on our our first page there? Well, actually on all of it, how much are they increasing or likely to increase our tax base?
I appreciate that question and I didn't look back at all the project lists before the meeting. I was prepared for the amendment section. So I I'm kind of looking back at some of the notes that I had back and forth with Chad. And it looks like some of those were major utility projects, projects. And that that's a very typical kind of project in an urban renewal area because it provides for capacity for development. Because sometimes you can't do increased development unless you upgrade those systems or those systems are in a state of disrepair so that that in development can't really happen effectively until those systems are upgraded. So that is a very typical kind of project and is one that helps spur new development. So it does increase that tax base, being able to provide that infrastructure. I'm looking here, if you could tell me a couple of other projects on your list, I could respond.
We've got a number of, you know, the, like you say, the utility things, the Main Street water line. And these, you know, there are sewer extension, pump station interceptors, all of which it seems would would increase capacity. So so I, then we get some other ones that are a little less obvious in terms of pedestrian improvements and and that sort of thing. I I'm not opposed to those things. I'm just trying to find if there are, if we'd want to do a sort of a little different approach. One of the things and and maybe you you could help with this, but how much? In in your experience, how much, how many of these agencies like acquire property for redevelopment?
It it depends in every, every city is different. Every plan has the ability to do acquisition as a project. Some cities, some agencies through, cities through their agency do acquisition usually because that private development is not happening on its own. And there's no way to make that private development happen unless the city through the agency makes it happen. A good case of point is in Coos Bay. They had a beautiful historic property that was in disrepair. The owner wasn't going to do anything to it except let it continue to degrade. This urban renewal agency bought the building, they improved the whole exterior of the building and then they resold the property for an economic use. So acquisition either can be for that kind of purpose or acquisition can be to create space for things that you need. So acquisition can be for creating affordable housing, workforce housing, because you're then able to control the property and help assist in the development of that housing. It can be for entrepreneurship of businesses, so being able to provide a space where rents are lower to create, I mean, it would seem like a a great program with your university would be some kind of a small business creation program where there's actually space for people to start developing small businesses. And that that would be a kind of thing where you could buy a building and do renovations to it. So that kind of thing could happen. So it it really depends on what you want to do and if the regular, I mean, I've worked, before I started doing urban renewal consulting, I was a practitioner. I worked at an urban renewal agency. And our mantra always was if the private market could do it, we didn't need to do it, right? But if the private market's not going to do it and you want it done, it's a goal of yours or a philosophy of yours of of value of the city, then you figure out how to do it by using your urban renewal funds.
Great. Now, just one more quick one. If if we were to add property to our, you know, our urban renewal area that is not on it now, the, we would only begin to improve or to appreciate tax increment from the time of acquisition or the the time that we move it into the district. Is that correct?
On a new property, but you have to remember the value of that property is probably a year behind. So if you moved something in, and I I don't think you can do it by this October because you have all that process unless you did a minor amendment. And you can move in anything under one percent through a minor amendment. So if you move something in before this October, it would be the value of that property as of January of twenty twenty. Because the tax assessor will not have issued the new tax rule in October of twenty twenty-one, which is the value of January of twenty twenty-one. So if there is some property and you want it to capture its value and development occurred and it didn't already get on the tax roll, but you think it's going to get on the tax roll, the timing of that's really important.
Okay.
Go back to one of your other questions too, because to to me, this is in down, in down, I'm familiar with Monmouth, in downtown commercial areas, things like streetscape and lighting and displays, those, those are really important. That sets the stage for who you are as a city and what people feel like when they drive through your city. So they certainly can help bring in new businesses, help businesses that are there flourish. There there are some cities that I go through that I wouldn't, I wouldn't stop. You know, I kind of look around and I go, you, I don't see any reason to stop in this city. There are some cities like Sisters, as soon as you drive in to Sisters and it has that beautiful streetscape and all of the little stores and I say, you think, oh, I'd like to stop here, but let's see what's here. So creating that atmosphere and the whole environment to make your downtown successful is important.
Thank you. I concur.
And that's kind of a principle out of the Main Street program too, physical environment.
Great. Good questions. Other questions or comments? Well, that that got us thinking, obviously, so.
Basil is with her brilliance.
Really appreciate that. Anything else Suzanne on this topic?
No, I think, you know, we'll just give you a chance to think about that some more. If you certainly have questions, please feel free to reach out to me or Marty and we'll, we'll come back to you in a future urban renewal session and continue this conversation.
And I I'll remind, thank you Elaine very much. Really appreciate it. We'll be in touch. And I'll remind the agency board members that the, when we talk about what each of these jurisdictions is sort of foregoing in tax revenue, that appears in an annual report that Janet Shinnard prepares and it is on our website under city departments, finance and annual financial reports. The Monmouth Urban Renewal District Annual Financial Report and the last one, of course, was for nineteen twenty at this point. But it does explain what those jurisdictions are and how much tax revenue is accruing into the urban renewal agency instead of benefiting those jurisdictions. So something else you might want to look at, the the number one is the Central School District. The city is number two, Polk County number three. And as Elaine mentioned, Polk County Fire District, because it's its own separate taxing district is number four, Tameka, the Lamont Education Service District. Tameka Community Regional Library, the four H taxing district that was created in Polk County and then Polk County Soil and Water. Those are the jurisdictions that give up some revenue from this and that information is all available to the public on our website. All right. Any other business before the Urban Renewal Agency? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Oberst. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks all.
Thank you. Good night.
You all since June.
Have a good day.